And put them in the right place and make them work and then the money is coming from WRCO.
I think, I think we need to be careful how we write this down because people are going to think it's exactly what the words say.
Yeah, we can change that, that's no big deal.
Terry, there's two things, we're not in a position, because I haven't got to the bottom yet, but there's a possibility that these weed abatement may be changing without the council of being aware of it and we have to get our arms around it.
Well, that's, that's the question, it's not even in the budget anywhere.
It's not even there and so I'm very concerned about the process that went through, but as I'm saying, I haven't got my arm around that yet and the city council as a whole needs to talk about it. There's another issue, harmful algae bloom. There's an effort, the water district owns the water, the POA leases the surface for recreational. There is no state stenture that I can find that says that if it's closed, and the government has, we as a government agency, we have to close it, we have to make that decision based on the information we get from TDM.
Only if it's an extreme emergency, otherwise we don't have the right.
Exactly, but if we do, it's open about how it's going to pay for the retesting to get it back open again and it's still not resolved. It's another one I'm wrestling with and trying to get. So it is potentially two costs and depends on how we get this thing finally resolved, it's going to cost us to spend more money than we're not going to be, as Vicki's saying, we're not going to be balanced. So I'm, I'm very concerned.
I don't have an S-12s copy with regards to the weed abatement?
No, because that's just, that's brand new that we're trying to figure out ourselves, we're going around to see how many lots there are.
It was the first one December, we're in June, it's not brand new. Yeah, this, this weed abatement's been going for a while.
Yeah, but the change is in the last, in my best estimate, in the last 60 days, a meeting where the council was not advised at all and, and it's still, in my opinion, hasn't been resolved, but until it gets resolved, it's going to be potentially a cost that we don't have in our budget and I'm very concerned about that.
I just got a notice on the way over here from Gene show about weed abatement and I was shocked because it's something that I've been working with POA on, I've cleaned a lot twice now and told them that I had fell out of form to let them know that it was going to be cleaned again due to the heavy rains we've had, we're cleaning lots every day, but I didn't know the city was involved at all.
We, we are not involved yet.
Jordan, until June 1st, I didn't know either.
Here's, here is, here's where we are, as I, as I see it from one that used to have, it's still very familiar with weed abatement processes. For various reasons, we have not been in that business, have not got an ordinance or anything in place to give us the authority to do it. We can do it, we have a government ability to do that, either the fire department, the code enforcement, or some other mechanism of doing weeds, because it's been on side of the gate, the POA's been doing it. I understand now the POA doesn't want to do it. That creates a whole new set of circumstances. We have to have everything and it's a very, it's not as easy as us writing a one-page document that says we will do it between April and June, because we have to have fee structures in place, you have to get a contractor, you have to do posting, so.
You have to give the chance to do it.
They have to get, they have to be noticed, you have to have the API numbers, you have to be able to then have a cost recovery, usually via the tax rule. So it's a, it is, it is an enforcement issue, but we do not have anything in place to even start it.
Well, Larry, excuse me, Larry, I appreciate particularly your background of your concern, that's fair. I've lived in Canyon Lake for 21 years, okay? And in the last couple of months, I guess I'm being repetitive, but without any conversation with the city council, people have got together and made the move over to a city responsibility, which is in my mind totally wrong. And so, we're going to get to the bottom of it and we're going to find out why. It worked, Larry, for 20 and a half years. So if there's, if there's a way to do it and we should, we should be, just because the attorney at the POA side, and I don't like this point either, but the attorney of the POA made a decision to move it to a different direction, it's not right without the city council being involved.
If I may. The POA has not offered their services for at least the last three years. It's up to the homeowner or the lot owner to clear the lot at their own expense. Before the city, if you did, the POA, if you didn't do it in a timely manner, they would do it and send you a bill for $350.
Yeah, Jordan, it's not for three years, it's been that for 20 years.
Well, but I mean, now they don't even offer that.
Right.
They're just, you're going to get a fine. Yeah, I know, but every time I get a lot cleared for next week, I get another notice.
That's why I'm saying, until this thing sells down a bit and we get total understanding and know how this whole transaction happened and the city, the council can make a decision, just because they want, don't want, now want to be involved is not acceptable.
I never heard until today that they didn't want to be involved, Larry, and I've been cohering with you and I understand the high fire danger at this particular time, so I go here.
And I will tell you, there have been several properties cited by the fire department when they were in here, because neighbors complained and it was a fire hazard. But the POA traditionally has taken the lead role. So you're, you're right. If we go down the road, needs to be endorsed, needs to be looked at and decide if it's something you want to be involved with.
Well, Larry, I've been on the POA side like Jordan has been, I've been the president of POA, I know how the process used to go until recently and to make a change without, what I've already said, is just, is wrong. Now, there's a new category, it's called harmful algae bloom. Now, well, I guess I brought up the business.
The weed abatement.
That's another thing that's going to be potentially a cost. So I'm very concerned, I'm glad what Vicki's saying, that we need to be very conscious, we need to make this thing balanced and keep it that way.
Okay.
I think we have to look to Vicki, because Vicki's our representative to, that's.
On the water side?
Yeah, on the water side, that's, you know, if you're going to ask me a fire issue, I can help you with that, but when you talk about water, it looks like this is good, but the rest of it, and it doesn't sound bad, absolutely, but I don't know what our rules and regs and what we're responsible for, to and from, so, and there are obviously liabilities that are hooked with anything you do, so, there you go.
Okay, that's it, Barry, can, can you want to speak?
Yeah. Mr. Barry Council, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I did want to compliment the council and the staff with their knowledge of this budget process and there's a lot going on that is not quite clear, so I want to make some general comments and then some more specific comments of a very minor nature. Philosophically, I think I sense a good attitude about trying to keep this a balanced budget. I think it's very desirable and I think also you might want to think about trying to do something to increase our reserves. I think part of what we're building up to is when the existing user tax, utility user tax comes up for renewal, we're going to need that most likely to be renewed and how we act today and how we act in the next couple of years is going to let our citizens know what are, whether they count on us or not, I think is very important. I also think that you're talking about the weed and the algae, it seems to me that those are both areas that would be a cost recovery basis. Whatever cost we incur, we're going to recover that cost one way or another. So I, I think it's a balanced budget issue that we, besides getting the process taken care of, budget-wise, we don't really need to concern ourselves with that, I wouldn't think, anyway. Couple of small things too, I know when I was on the council, there was some issues with the Chamber of Commerce, we were giving them four or $5,000, they took our representation off of the Chamber of Commerce board, we decided to no longer fund them because they weren't responsive to the city's issues. I would like to know where $1,000 came from, but unless we have a position on that board, I don't see why we would want to do that. Vicki already addressed some of the issues here with the car, that could, could have been a pretty expensive car, I think. I don't know about the Getz Road monument, because as far as I know, Getz Road really doesn't belong to the city Canyon Lake any longer, it's a benefit property, so I don't know what kind of monument we're talking about putting out there. But again, more specifically, I know there are a lot of issues that are going to resolve in the next couple of meetings, at least before it's officially approved and I compliment you on your efforts and I do hope you're successful in actually balancing our budget. I don't see any reason why we can't get a balanced budget. Thank you.
Hey Barry, as far as the weed abatement, I think you're probably right, it could be, we could find, but on the algae bloom, right now, it's not clear where we would get that money back. Somebody has to pay for the testing and if it's a city, I don't see our way to be able to recover those costs.
Okay, the algae's one, can I talk about weed abatement? Just, and I'm going to make it real sweet, we cannot collect a dime yet because we have no ordinance or recovery, nothing in place other than trying to build back ours on the, out there. We need, if we're going to, however this shakes out, we have, Barry's absolutely right, most of those programs are built on cost recovery. There is a fee that goes with it, there's an amount that goes with it, so it's, it's usually, it pays for itself and sometimes you get a little extra to offset staff cost. But we, you can't do it with a blank piece of paper.
That's why.
It's got to, it's got to be an official ordinance with timetable, cost recovery, fee structure, the whole nine yards.
And I don't know specifically about the algae issue, I just, I would imagine there's a way to get a cost recovery on that.
Well, when you find it, will you let us know?
Well, I just, I seriously, I seriously believe there's a way to get a cost recovery on that. I don't know exactly how it is, but just by general knowledge, either directly from Leechwell or from somebody like that would, would blend it into their costs, that type of thing, or our contribution, whatever it might be, but there's, I'm sure there's a way to do it.
Well, Barry, just for information, we had a task force in the last two weeks talking about this between the POA and District One from the Water District and the city and it was not clear at all that there's any way to recover the cost, whatever makes those, I'm not saying there's not a way, but we haven't figured it out yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you again for your attention to the budget and I look forward to seeing what the final results are and it hopefully is on the plus side.
Jack?
Jack Wonfle, I'll start off by answering some questions on Ledgewa for you. Martin Hartman and I started Ledgewa for the first four years and in answer to your question, Jordan, everybody paid an equal share, that's how it was set up, that's how we set it up. So I know that hasn't changed until recent, recently we've had contributions, for instance, from Elsinore and so on and that have doubled. I think they're at $20,000, I think at the present time. That was not agreed on when we originally started Ledgewa. So that gives you maybe something to work on. My recommendation would be, because a lot of things have changed and we have used Ledgewa in a lot of respects that actually helps our, our lake. I think that you might have taken an approach of maybe $5,000, maybe 50% of it for a year and take a look and see where you are in your police and fire and maybe next year and so on, maybe you can join in with another $5,000. But at least show some interest to, to continue. If you don't, probably the recommendation is that, well, you're not, you're not supporting equally, so therefore you shouldn't have representation equally. That would be one approach that they may take, I don't know. The other thing is that with reference to treatment of the algae, Ledgewa started off treating the algae years ago. I don't know what has changed, I've been involved in that for a long time, but I would certainly think that I would take that approach, Vicki, your representative there, from a simple standpoint that the quality of the lake is important with reference to the fact that it's a drinking water lake. It's a lot different than just Elsinore, it's a lot different than any of the lakes that come down the, the area here. We're a drink, we're a catch basin, really, for 700,000 acres of drainage through, coming from the mountain all the way down. And I think it's important that we keep quality of, of water. Do you have to be perfect? No, but at least you can take care to the point where it's usable with reference to our, our people, because we are paying a pretty good chunk of dough to use the surface of that water. So that would be another approach that I would talk with Ledgewa, I don't know whether they'd get support with that or not, but at least I would certainly try it. With reference to your weed abatement type thing, the POA has a rule that if you don't clear the weeds out on your property, the POA is going to hire somebody to come in and do it, send you a bill, as far as I know.
I know.
They, they changed that rule. Well, that was a sad rule, because, that was a good rule for the, for the organization because they didn't let them play around with it.
Jack, I'm sorry, we've gone way over our three minutes? Do you have more? I'm sorry.
Anyway, that's our recommendation.
Mike, do you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to clarify something on page 70. I think there was a question asked about that under building, that facility being this, 4,400. That, that is not the lunchroom, I mean, that's not.
What is that?
About, about 800, it's going to cover a new table, chairs in the lunchroom. The bulk of that is for the issue we just had recently, a few weeks ago regarding our, our server that crashed.
That's covered elsewhere? So now we're double? Sorry. It is covered elsewhere.
Oh, it is?
Yes. So 4,400, I don't know where that goes, but, but there's also another line item for the server issue.
Oh, there's 720 that you're referring to?
Yeah.
I, I think that's maybe just kind of general services. What, see, the issue we had was when the, the server crashed, there was a possibility that we would have to spend a few thousand dollars on the data recovery. That's not the direction we're going to go, because it's going to be too expensive to do, so, yeah, so we did budget to do an additional to actually pay to do that for. But since we're not going that route, some of the issues that we have with the server is that the, the power supply units that backup the server failed, so we do need to purchase new equipment for the server.
And it's in the wrong place for the lineup?
Then it probably is, I think maybe the, the W, it's not really described in general, but I just wanted you to be clear that that amount does not include, is not for the entire lunchroom break, it's only $800 for that.
So we'll need to make a correction to that, I want that put in the right place, so that it's discernible just what that's paying for, instead of jumbled in with.
Yes, we'll all move it to the right place.
Furniture.
Okay, is there any further comments or questions, or do we need a motion?
So to approve the budget now?
Yes.
Are there any changes made?
Yeah, all, all the changes discussed, we'll lower the Christmas party $3,000, we'll change the description for this so-called speed study and then we'll lower, we'll break out the non-lunchroom furniture, put in the proper categories.
How will we balance? We want it balanced.
We take the $80,000 out, it will be about $60,000.
Did the council agree to take the $80,000 out of the budget for the fire department? That was for the exhaust?
The big one would be the grant, we took the Steve.
That is, okay, I want something said to me, because it's public and I want it on record, because I've heard two different stories, I heard that we would be getting a grant and then I heard that that was not the case, that we wouldn't be getting a grant. So I want to be very sure that that $80,000 that we're going to remove from this budget, that we're not going to be having to come back in three months or two months.
As Councilmember Green mentioned, there is a grant out there that we're looking at to hopes to cover the cost for that exhaust system.
Vicki, you brought up a good point, I don't think you get a guarantee, we talked to Glenn Miller, who's the chief of staff, from Jeff Stone, and we talked to Jeff Stone, they're very supportive of, of doing that, but there's no guarantee that the grants are going to be approved.
Right, so we're going to balance the budget by removing something that we actually are going to have to put back in and we know it.
Here, here's a, here's another thought, okay? Because Riverside County is in the process of updating their stations for this equipment, we are not mandated to put it in right now, it was a nice item, because I happen to pick it up and be very familiar with the process, but because they're not saying we have to do it tomorrow, it doesn't, it, it's very possible we could defer it to next year, not, not as a pickup item, but maybe wrong, because if we get a funding source for it, then I think that's appropriate. So we put it in without this funding source, thinking it was going to have to be. After talking to staff, meaning fire staff, and asking what their program was, I, I come away uncomfortable that we can, it isn't a mandatory item we have to put in this budget.
Okay, so it wouldn't, if we didn't, if the, the funding never came about, this could go on next year's budget?
It could go on next year's budget and that's kind of the, the feel I first thought I got.
Not next year, I, not like words, but the following year.
Right, right. The next, the next budget.
And just for clarification, because I think you said the same thing, we'll make sure, that there's no requirement it has to be done right now, that it's because of Larry's background and his recommendation, I think it was a good idea.
Put it there as a wish list.
We need to get a grant and we need to get a grant.
It is and we found that there is possibly a, a funding source, so that even, that perked everything up, because one of the things I'd like to see, and we've talked about this as we work our budget, is to, everything looks like it's general funded, a lot of our items aren't general funded, they come out of other funds, so I think those ought to be IDed, but I, I think we can pull them.
Okay, so.
I mean.
That's fine, and I think that's fabulous, if that's the case, that it was a wish list item, that, that we don't necessarily have to have and pulling it doesn't give me angst.
I'm going to work really hard to get that grant first.
Okay, okay.
The, the other thing I just want to clarify too, it's, just so that it's clear, the costs, the annual cost for the website, that is covered through a grant, that has already been somewhat pre-approved, it's just a matter of, it works, type of thing. So that's 4,800.
Okay.
Regarding to that Getz Monument project, that is also two that's already covered under a grant, 100% two as well, it's just a matter of completing the project and submitting all the paperwork, we just have to pay for it upfront, it's reimbursed back through WRCO. The Speed Mobility Project is another project, I believe it's around $20,000, that's also covered through this grant that I have. Again, it's just a matter of completing the project, submitting the paperwork, WRCO pays it, so those are three items at least I want you to consider to, or to remember that we are going to get reimbursed back for those.
Okay. Jordan's got a question and I have one.
I did have a question, Larry, this exhaust system is retroviding, obviously.
Yes.
Other stations in Riverside County have this?
Yes, and the county's plan is we put, they only do two a year, so.
This is mandatory by the county or is voluntary?
It is, it's a voluntary compliance, probably their labor group hasn't raised it as an issue, because anytime you have diesel inside the living quarters, it does, it is a carcinogen, but they're putting, they're phasing it in with, with the thought that they'll eventually have this. I can say in the county of Orange, all departments there have had this device in place since the mid-'90s.
I understand the necessity, I'm just wondering, if we did do it for a couple of years, is anybody going to fine us for this?
I wouldn't go that far, I would say if we're in good faith for various reasons and we're doing everything we can, I think we'd be, be fine, but eventually that station will have to have that device.
And of course, once we get the grant, we'll be happy to do it.
Absolutely.
Well, just to know if there was a timeframe at all?
They have not and I actually raised that as a question to Chief Hemerton with maybe that someone in their organization had raised it as a concern and it had not. He was very happy that we were being proactive to move forward, but understanding our budget balance, he would also understand that too, with our thought that we are pursuing to put it in, so, or not Sheldon project, it's just we're looking for a funding source.
If we get the funding source, we'll bring it back this year, if we don't, stay fire. Go to the next year.
No, no, but we are, there are some other grants that we're also looking at, sacred grants and some other things that are coming up in the future, but this one is an AQMD and apparently each of the senators, from what we gathered, get some favorable lookings and according to Senator Stone, Canyon Lake has very seldom tapped their resources.
Right.
And he said so, come on, I'm here to help.
We did get an interest free loan for a million to redo the road one time, so, and then the fire, we got $375,000, so we did do something there, so. I just have one thing on the weed abatement, having been in Paris, if you don't, then they hire a contractor and your bill goes from $200 doing it yourself to $5,000 at the contractor, it's extremely political and contentious, so if you're going to do something with the weed ordinance, our fee study closes today and we've got about six people bid on it, so if you're going to do something, we should probably include it for the fee study and so if you're going to go that route where you're going to adopt an ordinance and fees, we need to do that soon.
We're the back of the order.
Yeah, it's not going to come.
Not until we have further instructions.
Okay.
Before you step away though, can I just give clarification one more time, what is happening with our city clerk? Is, okay.
City manager. Yeah, so the city clerk, my, my understanding is that the position was to be eliminated when she moved, we kept her around from the election and due to she was doing records cleanup, and so we kept her around till the end of the fiscal year and then we had somebody in place to be able to assume the deputy city clerk duties, we should be able to do that and the city clerk title would fall on the city manager.
I don't remember that that would be, I don't think that's appropriate, first of all, I don't know that it's legal, second of all, I know we need a city clerk, I don't know that the city manager can act as both, we'll be discussing other things later, but my concern at this point is if it's not in the budget and I don't, and Stephanie's going to be the deputy city clerk and we need a city clerk, we have to have one as a city, so where do we go with this?
Vicki, it actually goes before your time and when Harrington, Harrington first name?
Deborah.
Deborah, she was the, she was the city manager.
She can't hear you, it's on, but you're going to hear.
She was the city manager, just last city clerk, so we've done that in the past.
Councilman Warren is correct, you have to have the city clerk, but I've seen several cities, smaller cities, where it's city manager slash city clerk, city of Rolling Hills for 25 years was city manager slash city clerk, now we use a deputy city clerk to do the majority of the work.
So we're eliminating that part of the money, so that's why we would be able to, my point is, if that possibility doesn't bear out and we end up having and we end up having to have a city clerk instead of city manager slash city clerk, then what?
I'm not sure, Aaron. I think it's legal that we were...
Right, right, but if we...
It is legal, and we have done it in the past. So right now, you're just trying to figure out the budget appropriations.
Right.
We can put it on the agenda if you want to talk about the position more in a general term.
Okay. But if something changes in the near future, then we can address it then also?
Yes.
It's not budgeted for this position is my concern. If we need to address this in another month or so?
I mean, you could always add an unfilled budgeted position. That happens a lot.
Okay.
But we won't be balanced then.
Right.
But it's an unfilled position. I mean, please, partners do that all the time.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure there was a vehicle for it. Okay. The public works that I asked about, the extra $10,000, that was a guess?
Based on what they spent for '16, '17, that's the case.
But if we don't have anything in writing that says that...
They're supposed to provide that before they do it to us.
Okay.
Kind of a placeholder.
Probably don't think they have that.
Yes.
That would be another place we could take from Vicki, too.
Yep. And there are projects that they're currently working on, so I wanted to go forward, so...
All right.
But I think commend Aaron and Mike because our two biggest sources went up 10% and 17%, and we still came back in balance. I mean, it's a lot of work. There's a lot of questions. But it's not easy to balance when your biggest costs go up on average in 14%.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 budget?
What? Propose changes?
With changes.
You got a question? I think George's got a question.
We have an abstention.
Pardon me?
We have an abstention.
Yes. I have to abstain on page 43 with reference to the Chamber of Commerce. I've been advised by council, even though it's a nonprofit organization, since my wife serves on the board of directors, it would be best if I did not vote on that portion of the budget. So with that said, I'm abstaining on...
Just that one? Just that one item?
Yes. Anything referencing the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
So you want to make a...
Yeah, but then I would make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second.
All in favor? No, if you have a roll call.
Councilmember Aaron Grant's?
Yes, with my abstention.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Warren?
Yes, with the changes.
That's correct. Yes, with the changes. Mayor Bonner?
Yes. And a final commentary. I've been working with you for, what, five years? A couple of year break. And I appreciate all the good effort you put into this and how quickly you were able, when there's questions, you're able to answer. It makes it our job a lot easier when we can find the solution. And Vicki had a lot of good questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it? I think we... Oh, no, we needed a... We have to do the... Oh, we need salary? Resolution 2010... 2017 dash 10? Do you want to read that?
Right, so this is the approval resolution 2017 dash 10 regarding the salary and wage schedule for employees for fiscal year 1718. This is the exact same schedule as was the last few years. Nothing has changed with the exception of the code enforcement tail range.
Any comments? We better wait for Jordan to get back. Hmm?
Let my office go. I'm waiting on it.
Six out there.
Yours is at home?
No, very much. I had it holding in last year. Yes, it went out on a day like this last year.
Yeah, mine did too last year. On a day just like this.
Really?
Oh, yes. It was awful.
It was a bad day.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
You're around 72, which is the resolution 1710 to approve the salaries. That's actually right. I make a motion?
So here, I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Grant's?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Warren? Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero to approve resolution number 2017 dash 09 and resolution number 2017 dash 10. As presented.
Okay, so we're going to recess now to close session. At 1:40 or...
12:40.
12:40.
12:40.
12:40. Oh, thanks. Thanks, Michael.